Good evening, everyone. It's Wednesday, November 2nd, 2022. It's 6:00 PM almost. It's a regular meeting of the Pacific Grove City Council. I have a roll call.
Mayor Peak?
Here.
Mayor Protem Emilio?
Yeah.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye, here.
McAdams?
Here.
Paduri? Smith?
Here.
And Tomlinson?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. And Councilmember Smith, will you lead us?
Yes. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Perick, any report out?
No reportable action from the closed session.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two announcements. Thank you, Ms. Hannah, followed by Ms. Kandel. Thank you.
Um, Mayor, we missed the approval of the agenda.
Oh, yes, flying through that. Okay. Motion to approve the agenda.
So, no vote.
Second.
End of vote.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmembers Tomlinson?
Aye.
Paduri?
Aye.
Coletti? Mayor Protem Emilio?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero to approve the agenda.
All right. Thank you for keeping me on track. All right. Staff announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Hannah, followed by Ms. Kandel. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members and members of the public. This evening, I wanted to share with you that the City Administrative Services Department completed a recruitment for a finance manager, deputy director of finance. And this evening, I'd like to announce that Audrey Cray has been selected for the position. Audrey has been with the city close to five years, where she has worked in the library and most recently in the finance department, where she's been responsible for oversight of AP payroll, the workers' comp, and the safety program, and also assist in preparing the budget and the financial statements. Audrey has a bachelor's degree in business management and also volunteers for all in Monterey County, where they assisted with the fire evacuee efforts. And with that, I'd like to introduce Audrey and her family is here with her tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I look forward to working with you more in the future, as I will probably be doing some more council items. So, thank you for this opportunity. I look forward to being here with the City of Pacific Grove.
Welcome and congratulations.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and members of the public. Pursuant to Pacific Grove Municipal Code Sections 3.02, 3.04, and Council Policy 000-5, the City Clerk's Office has published the city's annual notice of vacancies for boards, commissions, and committees, and posted a copy in the kiosk on Laurel. The City Clerk's Office will be accepting applications through December 27th, 2022, for those interested in serving on a board, commission, or committee. Current board, commission, and committee members with upcoming January and February 2023 term expiration dates have been contacted by email. However, as a reminder, for eligible persons who desire to continue serving, they must reapply. That concludes my announcement. Thank you.
Council announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know, Sandra, do you have the Veterans Day flyer up? If you don't, that's okay. I'll talk about it.
I don't. I'm sorry.
No problem.
We could try to search for it really quickly.
Anyway, on Veterans Day, November 11th, obviously, at 10:30 at Lover's Point, we're going to have Veterans Day celebration. And there's several of us been involved with it, but it should be really good. We've got a guest speaker from the Defense Language Institute. She's a lieutenant commander from the Marine Corps, and she'll be the guest speaker along with some others. And also, I was, I got the Pacific Grove High School marching band coming in on a song also. So, it should be a great event, 10:30 Lover's Point, November 11th. Please come. It should be over with by 11:20 in the morning. By 10:30 to about 11:15 is what I expect. That's my announcement. And Mayor's going to speak also.
Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank the City Clerk's Office for including public comments in our agenda packets. I appreciate how timely that was implemented. The trick-or-treating in our downtown last Saturday was absolutely incredible. Thank you to the organizers and businesses who participated, as well as the thousands of kids who came down and made the event a huge success. And then lastly, our meetings are now livestreamed on Facebook. So, if you miss a meeting or the video's not up, you can go on the City of Pacific Grove's Facebook page and find the meeting there. Thank you.
Councilmember Paduri?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have a two or three announcements here. First of all, Audrey, by the way, congratulations on the promotion. Looking forward to working with you. Pacific Grove, in conjunction with Smart Growth America, is conducting a two-day workshop series on 9th of November and 10th, which is next week, for safety improvements on the Sunset Drive State Route 68 corridor, in particular, the 5A intersection on Sunset, Congress, and Cedar. This workshop features a walking audit and is an opportunity to capture community feedback. More information is available on the city website. The other item I had was that in partnership with the six association governments, which includes the Association of Monterey Bay Governments, Caltrans has funded a strategy to accelerate the adoption of zero emission vehicles and identify gaps and opportunities to implement zero emission vehicle infrastructure along the central coast. The strategy is called Central Coast Zero Emission Vehicle Strategy. And at the moment, the team is looking for public input around ideas and locations through an interactive mapping tool that is available through the end of November. This information is available at the website, www.CentralCoastZV, that is Zero Emission Vehicle, ZVStrategy.com. I encourage everyone to provide their thoughts there. And then finally, I wanted to remind everyone that November 8th is only six days away, and you can drop your ballots by the ballot box or mail them, and not exactly wait until next week. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to general public comment. Anyone, please, come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jenny McMurdo. I'm the president and CEO of the Pacific Grove Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanted to invite you, as well as the public, to another ribbon cutting on Friday, the new frozen yogurt place that's at Lover's Point, and it's kind of in the same building as California Seltzer Company. That's Friday at 5:00. And then also, I wanted to tell the public again, the Holiday Parade of Lights is coming up December 1st, and applications are on the Chamber website, as well as in person. You can call us. You can come down to our office and grab one, but the applications are due at the end of this week, so I'm trying to get the word out. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you for just allowing people like myself to talk this. I know it's a pretty standard thing, but it's a privilege to get up and address the mayor and the council. And before I say all this, election, I think Chaps mentioned is next Tuesday, and we have a little group, we've met with everybody who's running for office, and everybody was gracious and kind and wonderful, and I appreciate everybody standing out in front of the post office or down to the farmer's market, and that's part of what democracy is all about. So, thank you for doing that. One of the things it's about is that Peggy and I, Peggy's here in the audience, attended the fentanyl session that was last Monday and Tuesday night, right? It was great. It was, it was great to see the city staff, the teachers, Ralph there, the superintendent, and I think Debbie Beck was there, and Frank Rivera was also there, who's on the school board. Unfortunately, the city and the police outnumbered the number of parents and kids who were there for most sessions, pretty much. But, you know, we were there, and they had a handout, and you have that here in front of you, and it was in the fentanyl handout, and it says "Mists of Marijuana." And my friend Chaps here made a couple of comments, I'd just like to refer to them, and about the safe use of marijuana in children, and whether or not we're informed or misinformed. And I didn't even expect the handout to be there, but what is in the handout that is in front of you is this whole issue, is marijuana or cannabis safe? And this handout comes from Montage. There were two ER doctors there. They did a great presentation. I'm sure most of you have seen it. You either saw it online or you saw it live, and it was very dramatic about the impact of fentanyl. But at the end, I asked the both of the ER docs about marijuana, and I said, "Is it safe?" And they said, "It is not safe." And you can read here for yourself, the impact of marijuana on young minds and the primary effect it has in resulting psychosis among kids. And it's, it's pretty horrifying. They said they see it every day in the Montage ER. And we're getting ready to vote on this here in Pacific Grove, measure M. And if you haven't figured it out, I'm against it, and we've been out talking to people and asking them the same thing. And there's a lot of, and Chaps is right, there were a lot of misinformation out there. And I would just like to say, it's not medicine. It's not safe. It does have an impact on driving. It does have an impact on homework. This is Montage. These doctors put this all on a piece of paper, and it is addictive, and it's horribly addictive. The THC levels in it make it not only addictive but dangerous. So, I just, anybody listening on Zoom, anybody out there that hasn't voted, M is something that five years from now, I think we're going to regret if we pass it. I think we're going to have major regrets that we pass this here in Pacific Grove. So, thank you for listening. Thank everybody for talking about the election and being out there and getting the word out, and good luck to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, and we have one virtual. Tony Chiani?
Welcome.
Good evening, members of the council and Mayor Peak. It's pretty clear that Pacific Grove has an amazing array of resources, natural resources, forests, shoreline, treasured resources, historical resources, and a wonderful sense of community. Yet, it appears that Pacific Grove does not have the kind of staff, the kind of leadership that is able to accommodate the importance of protecting those resources. And so, and this is no disregard to the staff and their talent and their efforts and their efforts to carry out their responsibilities. But the bottom line is, Pacific Grove has a complex set of requirements to protect the resources here, as complex as any large coastal city in California, yet it doesn't have all of the, all of the components that allow the staff, allow you, the council, allow the planning commission, to carry out the efforts to protect the resources. I bring this up because I see a pattern of failed, flawed attempts to carry out the policies of the general plan, the policies of the local coastal program. And I'm not sure where the blame is. Maybe there should be no blame, but the problem is, it's not working. So, I would hope the council and the planning commission and all the other commissions and committees would attempt to put some focus on competence and knowledge and listen to the community as you're proceeding to carry out your duties. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further hands are raised.
All right. On to the consent agenda. Anyone from council wishing to pull a consent agenda item? Seeing none? Anyone from the public? Well?
One, one online caller, Inga Lawrence Endimer.
Welcome.
Thank you, Sandra. I would like to pull the fire, purchase of the fire engine.
All right, 9B. Right. Any, any other items?
No further hands here.
All right, let's hear that. It's 12A.
Motion to approve consent agenda amended, as amended.
Second. End of vote, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmembers McAdams?
Aye.
Paduri?
Aye.
And Tomlinson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero to approve the consent agenda as amended.
We've just approved council minutes from October 19th. We've adopted a resolution rescinding a lien at 8987 Raneford. We've held a second reading of self-safe parking program revisions. We've held a second reading for municipal code changes authorizing the mayor to sign contracts and purchasing system and procedures and warrants. We've held a second reading, adopting an ordinance, amending the protections for seal pupping season. And we've received quarterly reports, treasurer reports, oh, and status of records management and Traffic Safety Commission meetings from August. That's it. Onto item 11A, Mr. Cool?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The adding before you this evening is an event that happens every three years when California changes the building code, and local municipalities are required to go through a process to acknowledge the building code and then the building and associated codes. And if the local jurisdiction so chooses, they can make amendments that are more restrictive than the code is defined by California. So, what you have tonight is a draft ordinance with a very few amendments. What California has done over the last several years is they try to mainstream, but they try to coordinate with local municipalities so that there aren't as many local amendments. So, we've been able to remove some of the amendments from the past because it's now incorporated into the code. And the few amendments that you see before you tonight, they are due to local climatic, geographic, and topographical conditions, and the findings are listed in the draft ordinance. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any further questions. And what we are asking the council to do is to request the city attorney to read the title of the ordinance, motion to waive further reading of the ordinance, introduce and hold first reading of an ordinance that adopts the 2022 edition of the California Building Standards Codes with amendments, and direct the publication of the ordinance will be satisfied by publication of a summary approved by the city attorney. And that concludes my presentation.
Public comment?
We have no online public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Council discussion? Mayor Protem Emilio?
Just, just a question. I saw the acknowledgements on the thing from Governor Newsom all the way down. Do they ever get input from local cities or counties or anything on the bill? I'm just curious if they ever asked, "What do you think of this?"
Good, good question. The, there's basically a three- to a five-year process of just what you're indicating is public impact, input from not just municipalities, but they take information from experts in fields. They take information from manufacturers so that they can formulate opinions. So, the Building Standards Commission does hold many, many, many hearings that are open to the public for, for public comments. And before an amendment can be adopted, it goes through a process that the Building Standards Commission is a governor-appointed commission with, there's a building official, there's contractor state license board, there's a whole series of industry experts so that when, when an item is heard, that it does get scrutinized.
Thank you.
Mr. Perick, would you please read the title of the ordinance?
From my microphone first. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacific Grove, amending chapters 18.04 and 18.32 of the Pacific Grove Municipal Code regarding the adoption of building codes and related international codes. And you do not have to, in your next step, read all of the remaining items. You can just say, "You're moving the actions as recommended in the agenda."
Your Honor, move actions as recommended in the agenda.
Maybe we have a vote, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmembers Coletti?
Aye.
Tomlinson?
Aye.
Is seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. The former 9B, I think.
Good evening. I don't have a presentation for you tonight. This is an item that was, that was previously on the agenda, to purchase a fire engine. A council approved the purchase of the fire, fire engine at the last council meeting. However, there was some uncertainty in regards to the financing of the loan. The documents attached to the agenda report include the documents to initiate the loan, which does carry a 4.24% interest rate. I've also had the opportunity to look at our preliminary fund balance, and there were some initial questions as if we could make any additional payments at this time. Just to give you an idea where we are looking at, if we look at what our reserve requirements are, we are ending with $1.2 million in unprogrammed money. So, there are funds that could be allocated to this. However, they could also be invested or retained. Investment rates now are at close to 4.7%. Or they, they could be held until you can make a prepayment in August, if you choose, and that way, there would be additional time to receive additional budgetary projections and evaluated alternate priorities. And with that, I conclude my report.
Public comment? Welcome.
My name is Andy Kubica. I'm a resident here in Pacific Grove. Mr. Mayor and City Council, good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. If I'm correct, there's been a long-term plan to fund a fire truck fund for the last several years. That money in that fund was depleted during COVID and not replenished with the ARPA money. The ARPA money was used for other things. The cost of a new fire truck in 2020 was in the mid-$600,000 range. Actually, I believe that the email I got from Ms. Hannah was, at that time, it was, I got this email in October of '21. If we had purchased a truck in October in 2020, it would have been about $682,000, fully tricked out. But the cost had to be, you know, in October '21, there was inflation, so we didn't actually go out and get a quote at that time. Now, the quote we got is $928,000. Now, the plan is to purchase a truck on a lease over 10 years, will add interest to that $928,000. The interest cost over that time would be $188,910.52. So, the purchase for a truck that we could have bought several years ago with ARPA money or funded money would have been about $680,000. Now, it's going to be $1,116,910.52 if we take this on a 10-year lease and do the entire 10 lease. The interest that will increase the cost of the truck by 20.3%. And we need a second truck because this truck is from 2007, I believe, and the other one is an older truck. Staff has just presented that there's an approximately $1.2 million money rolling over from fiscal year 2021, and I thank Ms. Hannah for sending that information to me. That was in the errata sheets that was for this meeting. I strongly suggest that the city purchase the fire truck as soon as possible so that no further interest charges are incurred. Making the decision to pay for the truck in cash at this meeting before a lease is signed on November 11th appears to save the closing costs, any prepayment penalties, and would save the city $188,000. And when you add the prepayment discount in there, we'd be saving the city $235,000 by making the payment now, using some of that $1.2 million versus doing a 10-year lease. I believe this would be fiscally responsible, saving 26% of the total purchase price of $1.6 million, $1.16 million. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We have two callers online, Mayor. Inga Lawrence Endimer?
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm going to concur with Mr. Kubica and say that certain financing options that are attached to this were not given to us before, and I thought, I heard that there were no prepayment penalties, but it turns out that closing fees are associated if we do a early payoff. I'm really uncomfortable with the money that we had set aside being used for other purposes and not replaced. This is just not any way to run a city, and certainly not for the citizens. So, I'm going to concur with Mr. Kubica and say, "Pay it." And certainly, not 10 years and all of this interest. It's just, or at least do a seven-year or possibly less because it's not going to get better. And please do not waste money that's set aside for something again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tony Chiani?
Welcome.
Councilmembers and mayor, buy the truck now. Don't buy it over time. Please don't waste our money on interest rates.
Buy the truck now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Shacklin?
Thank you. I'd like to endorse comments of the prior three speakers. All of them were very, very clear in that the fiscal analysis that was presented to you is incomplete. When it comes to a fiduciary decision like this, it's it's it would be embarrassing to just say, we don't care about the extra several hundred thousand dollars. We're just gonna go with what the incomplete financial purchase report recommends. I suspect I recommend that you continue this item. Get a more complete financial analysis, which gives you three courses of action on on cost, on on utility and on needs of the needs of the city. And then work go forward from there because right now it sounds like this is a bad decision that's going downhill too quickly. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further hands are raised.
Council discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. So when we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, the the forecast was to we were too far away. Clearly been looking at the numbers for last couple of weeks and and I'm glad this item was pulled. The thank you to the member of the public who pulled it. The one point two million is a lot. And I, you know, my two schools of thoughts is, you know, don't program one point two million when it's your last meeting, which is this is one of my last meetings. But I also don't want to kick the problem to the next council and and so I'm I'm very supportive of us reprogramming that money for what we need to to do our responsibility of paying for the truck upfront and not incurring interest payments over ten years, a hundred and eighty eight thousand plus sixteen thousand in closing costs is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, as Mr. Kubica said. So, you know, saving two hundred and fifty thousand dollars by paying for it outright, we should have had the money set aside and and programmed any anyhow anyway. So I I I know two weeks ago I was on board with leasing it because I didn't know what our financial situation looked like. But given that we will come up with that much of an excess in the general fund, if that's what I'm understanding, then I am supportive of paying for the truck and not getting into this lease on the eleventh of November or loan, I however I want to call it.
Councilmember Coletti?
I I'm gonna concur. I think we should, if we have the funds to pay it, pay it now. And I don't, I think we would have made that decision back when we authorized our a large, the lion's share of the ARPA funds to go towards salaries and benefits. If we knew this was coming before us, you know, within mere months, I think we would have made a much different decision. So I think we can kind of write it, bring it back, write, write the decision, and I would support paying it with funds available. Thank you.
Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor, and I agree with Councilmember Tomlinson and Councilmember Coletti. I do have a question. The City of Solidad last week on October twenty ninth, they accepted a check for two million dollars from the state for the purchase of a ladder fire truck. Mayor Velasquez and Senator Ana Caballero advocated successful successfully for the funds. Is this something that the city has done or will do or can do?
I would have to look at that with the the fire chief to confirm. I have not heard of that, but maybe he has some information on it.
Okay, so since the secondary truck will have to be replaced in possibly ten years or less, I would really encourage staff to research these options, especially if if there's state money out there. So and happy to purchase the the fire truck just outright. And I appreciate that we were able to get the information, have it come back and and make a much better decision. Thanks.
Councilmember Smith?
Oh, yeah, I I could definitely see the utility in purchasing it out right now. Save that money. Thank you.
Ms. Hannah, what do we need to do to buy it now?
I I would need a a motion to authorize the purchase and I would come back and amend the budget. I would have to wire the funds this week or the first part of next week to be able to close and maintain the advanced discount. So I would just need that authorization.
Mayor Protem Emilio?
You may. Ms. Hannah, what's our total? Right now, our total reserves you projected right now, total reserves we have?
Well, when we're looking at our right now, we're ending the year with about twelve million, but we also have to carry forward some projects and commitments that weren't complete in the last fiscal year. So when that is adjusted and we look at where we might end up, that's closer to eleven point four million and our reserve requirement is ten point two.
Thank you. I'm also for the purchase.
Right, I think we're ready. Councilmember Tomlinson?
I'll try to make a motion.
Good.
I'll move that we approve the purchase of a fire truck with the general fund and authorize Ms. Hannah to wire the funds ahead of the budget amendment.
And Ms. Hannah, is that motion sufficient?
I I believe so unless the city attorney has any other suggestions.
We could include the amount, the eight, it's eight hundred and two something, right? The or is it eight eighty two with the?
Approximately eight eighty two.
Down payment, yeah. If someone has that exact number, I would I would think maybe including that in there. Eighty two, yeah, it's in the staff report. Is that motion good?
Spirit, are you?
Thinking hard?
Good on that motion.
Could you restate what the motion is?
All right, I'll try the to authorize the city to purchase the fire truck outright and wire transfer the money ahead of an actual budget amendment using funds from the general fund.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, any discussion further? Councilmember Coletti?
Ms. Hannah, can you just confirm what the total cost will be to find to pay for it all upfront?
Councilmember Coletti to the mayor, I did not bring the actual cost sheet with me, but it was eight hundred and eighty one thousand, maybe five hundred. It is just between eight hundred and eighty one thousand and eight hundred and eighty two thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe we have a vote, please.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember Pedri? Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries six one. Councilmember Pedri dissenting.
We're on to item thirteen A, Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. Welcome, Ms. McKenna.
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor, public and city staff. I'm here to talk today about climate action planning, which I've spoken with a few folks about, and I know it's of interest in the community. People have been talking about it in many different circles. And over the past three decades, over six hundred and nine cities have adopted climate action planning. And it's really the actions of local governments that can kind of move the needle on reducing greenhouse gas emissions and decarbonation, decarbonizing our community. And so cities can play a really important role, and that's really what we're here to talk about today. The BNRC discussed this as a subcommittee. It was brought, if you go to the next slide, I just wanted to provide just a little history. There's lots of folks that are working about and thinking about this. And so the Sustainable Pacific Grove brought it up to the mayor in twenty twenty as an opportunity to get started on this. And then it came back to the BNRC to review, and so we took that up as a challenge to be able to get input, do some research. We're no by no means experts on climate action planning. We know it's important. So this isn't prescriptive. This is mostly opening up that opportunity and making some commitments to that. And so we clarified some of the recommendations, and this was back in April. And then we're here today to sort of discuss what those recommendations are and and hopefully continuing this conversation on. And you can go to the next slide. So just an overview of the material we provided you, we kind of formatted this as a concept review as as a recommendation. And what we do is we provide a summary, which most of us are aware of the justification and the urgency to take this action. So that's sort of the first page. And then we thought it was, well, being newer to the community, I also thought it was important to start to think about what our city has already undertaken in terms of climate action planning. And so we did that. I know it's not complete. There's likely other things on there, other things that have come up since then. So that's more of a living document, but we wanted to start somewhere to really celebrate that the city is committed to climate action planning, but maybe doing it in a more systematic approach is where we need to head. And so our specific recommendations, if you go to the next slide, are just really committing to the initial planning. One way to do this would be to start a commission or start start a commission, but start a a working group. I don't know what we would call it. I don't know the proper term, but we have, we'd have a dedicated team of individuals that would start moving this forward in our community. This would be of other commission members, climate action planning intersects with so many different dimensions in the city. And so I would think it would be a very inclusive group of different individuals, city staff, elected officials, local business representatives, as well as members of the public if possible. One of our recommendations on here was integrated into the general management plan. Like I said, this isn't prescriptive. This was one recommendation that we heard is a great way to sort of incorporate climate action planning. But it's not the only way. And the reason generally, you know, we knew that it was underway in the city and it could have been an opportunity to sort of incorporate climate action planning into that general management plan because it intersects with so many different things as well as that plan is updated periodically, and it's important to keep these climate action plans as living documents. So not prescriptive, but one thing that came up in our in our discussions. And the last one, maybe this is a a goal of the committee that started, is to sort of keep documents of of where how we're working towards climate action planning. So it would expand on that list that I already talked about. There's other things that have been going on and other things that fit in this, and I think it's important. And so the members of the public and the community can see what the city is doing to take take this action. So I just really opening up the opportunity and really committing to this initial planning. And yeah, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you please stay there? I'm sure we're gonna want to talk to you further. Public comment?
We do have some online. Tony Chiani?
Welcome.
I think it's really wonderful that the city is working on this, that this committee is working on this. The California Coastal Conservancy is funding, in fact, actually looking for applicants for grants to fund this sort of activity. The Coastal Commission, and of course, we're a coastal city, and the Coastal Commission is also promoting this kind of activity. So I think the city probably through the CDD and through this group, through the BNRC, should be seeking funding. And I can't tell you when it is because I don't have it in front of me. But the State Coastal Conservancy is holding a webinar on grant funding for several activities, which I think would include this kind of activity. So please pursue this diligently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Shacklin?
Welcome.
Once again, I find myself echoing Tony's comments and agreeing with him. I would say that the BNRC has done a good job and 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 this evening's presentation is good, too. I would hesitate to immediately set up another task force or another committee out of the blue for this without socializing it and getting more parameters and more public comment with with more town halls or the like. BNRC should be a locus for this. And Land Watch, Coastal Conservancy, all these sort of resources are great to 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 leverage the energy and the and and the initiatives that we have here going forward. But I just don't see building a large bureaucratic structure there. They've been counterproductive of late in many instances. And BNRC is certainly a wonderful place to a catalyst to start this going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Chiani?
Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I excuse me just a second, Tony, you've got to mute yours. Okay. I just want to totally support this climate action work. We're we're kind of behind on that already. And our BNRC, as I attend their meetings regularly, and there's tremendous energy there. But and and they're trying to take on a lot of really important initiatives. And so I I think this is obviously an extremely important one for our city and for the planet. So I I think it is important to have some kind of a a working group as as I'm understanding. Megan, you know, is just a collaboration. And maybe the city's way of formalizing things is going to be awkward. But anything that the city council can do to support BNRC's plans on this would be, it would be very, very important for for you to take on. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further hands, Your Honor.
Council discussion? Councilmember Coletti?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you very much for the presentation. And I I want to echo first off Lisa Chiani's comments about the BNRC have we're being a good group. It is. And and we're fortunate to have it. I I think climate change is something we just can't ignore, and it is recognized under state statute as being an element of the general plan, which is our constitution for land use elements. And Megan mentioned, there's all this intersection, a land use element, circulation element, housing element, conservation element, open space element, safety element, noise element, et cetera. So the the nexus of all of this is really the general plan. And I would love to see and encourage the BNRC begin the process of developing scoping ideas for funding and for the development of a climate change element to our general plan. That's where it belongs. That's where that's that's the land use or the the constitution for our local land use. So I thank the mayor for his leadership on this, and I think we've got a place to plug this or, you know, plug this effort into, and that's the general plan. And as we hear, you know, time and time again, our general plan is is out of date. It it was a very good general plan at the time, and it still is in a lot of ways, but it was adopted nineteen ninety four. A climate element was never incorporated into the climate change element was never incorporated into the general plan. And our conservation and open space elements are woefully inadequate. So I think if we start targeting on various elements that do need effort, do need a development such as a climate action or climate change element, I think we can get there, and I'd like to encourage the BNRC to help us get there.
Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much for this presentation and this work. I I really appreciated the examples of City Watsonville and Santa Cruz and something that I really was inspired by. um, really was inspired by is the city of um, Watsonville actually um, approved a resolution um, declaring a climate emergency and requesting collaboration towards an immediate just transition and emergency mobilization effort to restore a safe climate. So that really um, I know a resolution, you know, just some people see them as fluff words, but for me like that is really a huge commitment um, that their city made. Um, I I absolutely support a working group and especially with having talented, motivated and willing volunteers. Um, and then also with this component of collaboration through sustainable um, Pacific Grove. So I am for that. And I just am excited. Oh, and I really also liked the summary um, that you provided and and it's really clear to me that we're behind and and there's a lot of of meaningful work that needs to be done. I mean, I, I think the smaller things that the city has put forth, like upgrading the light bulbs and installing water filling stations, like that's nice. And you know, there's some, some really huge issues that need to be um, addressed and looked at, especially when we're um, talking about our aging um, tree canopy, but also like being really mindful about wildfire safety and prevention. So um, thank you so much and I um absolutely support having a working group and 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 going, moving forward. Thank you.
Council member Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you for the report. I uh, I, I, so I have a couple of questions first. Um, who on staff where I know it, staff all wears lots of hats. Do we have somebody wearing a sustainability hat? Who is that?
Councilman Thompson through the mayor, that's our environmental programs manager, Mr. First.
Okay. And um, and then who's our liaison to the BNRC right now? Okay, cool. Just checking on the, the who in, in the, in, in this process because I just think the laundry list is really long. I mean, there's a lot that can be done. And so, you know, I love to organize chaos and I, I think that one of the ways to do it is kind of take a working backwards approach and where do we want to be in five years? Set up goals regarding uh, ones that, you know, give them like tier one, tier two, tier three, tier one requires collaboration among a lot of people. The BNRC, this potential working group, staffs required grant money, you know, lots of collaboration and coordination would be a tier one type goal. And meaning it's big, right? Where there's two or three goals that are, that are easier maybe that the BNRC can take and run with and um, and and action on, and they have been with the lights, with the, with um, electrification of things, with getting the the, the city's help to get the EV charging station and the drinking fountains and stuff like that. So um, I know we met, I don't know, probably a year ago now, kind of talking about how do we organize this chaos? And I don't know that we're that much further along. Um, and and I think that's why you're here tonight saying, I need help to organize this. And and so if the, if the movement is to put another committee together, then I, I, I would love to support that. Um, but my question is, is the BNRC just overloaded because there's so many things already on that plate that it's not humanly possible to to accomplish those things? I, I guess I look to the liaison of the BNRC as well.
Well, I'd invite the chair to come up and and address that issue if she wishes, but I think there is the bandwidth to do this, absolutely. And it, I, I, I'm recommending this, a targeted amendment or a creation of our general plan element. And and there's plenty of examples out there to kind of kickstart the effort. But I don't think we're uh, we're sh- uh, we're short on supply of, of talented people to help get this started.
Okay, I'll finish my comment. I, I, I don't think that we're short of talented people either. That wasn't what I was trying to imply. And I, 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 I know you didn't take it that way, but that's great news. Um, and so it just, I think maybe hearing from the council tonight that, that we are committed to climate action, to sustainability, to protecting our natural resources, to making these right decisions. And then, you know, someone, somehow we need to organize the, the lists of what we do. What, what type of actions need major collaboration financing? What type of actions are able to be done at a lower level? Um, and then start knocking it out. And then five years from now, we'll be really proud of where we're at. And aligning it with the general plan makes perfect sense. So those are my comments.
Council member Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I just wanted to support Luke's comment. Um, I think that we need to have this be an integrated plan with the general plan and also keeping in mind the local coastal program. Because I'm, I'm reading the Watsonville uh, link that y'all provided and basically it talks about um, uh, you know, different intersections of topics that we covered in the local coastal plan. And so I think that you, you, you might run into some policies, actually some intersection and some overlap. And so, and that leads me to my comment about the group that might be able to work on this. I would say there was the planning commission that developed the local coastal program and with the help of staff, a lot of staff assistance with that. So I think the formula is probably the same. It's the BNRC with the help of staff to develop this plan or in collaboration with planning commission or something like that. I think that's how we did it. Then it comes up to the council for review and approval. So that's kind of like the process that I see. Cause I think it needs to be integrated with the rest of our policies because we have a lot of them. Probably too many, but yeah, thank you.
Council member Pendory.
Yeah, I know we had invited some folks to speak, uh, perhaps like, um, we can have the chair speak and then I can ask questions. Oh, you're gonna answer or were, were you ready to comment on something? Okay, uh, so um, thank you first of all for preparing this. I know it's a especially on volunteer time. I, I totally get it. Um, so thank you. Um, and I know like we're, I, I'm, I'm just reading through the city council uh, kind of goals and policies and we have a goal and policy about environmental stewardship. We have uh, items in here which mention about reducing carbon footprint. It's just that we're not uh, my, I view this as that we're not taking like actionable steps towards this. Uh, and so the cap, uh, anything like a climate, climate action plan makes perfect sense. And I also don't see why we need to I totally get the fact that we need to kind of update the general management plan with the climate action plan and so on. But this can be its own living document, just like the local coastal plan. This can be its own document. There you have a climate action measures, put all the climate action measures in one document and then you can certainly adjust and tweak all of their documents later. But if we combine all of these activities together, I, 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 what I foresee is that it is just going to drag on. And I think it's imperative for all of us to take action right now. So on that note, my question to you is, uh, A, uh, how important is it for BNRC to tackle this item and bring it back to council, number one? Or do you think it needs to be a council driven action where we can take steps faster as opposed to BNRC? And two is how important do you think that we need to merge these documents? The general management plan and the capital climate action plan together as part of this effort?
Thank you. Thank you all for, I mean, this is the conversation needs to be had, right? There's all sorts of ways to approach this. So I really value and I've dotted down all these possible options. I, I don't know what the best option is and I would look to the council, obviously to help with that and say, I would to, to set that direction for the BNRC. So we could not just keep coming back and then maybe make, you know, like, I feel like if the kind of off the cuff here, but I do feel like some organization or some structure that involves city council or involves city staff will help the BNRC kind of keep it going. We're here to support it. We're here to provide the information. We're not gonna necessarily write it. We could look for the funding, like, we're here to but we're, this was kind of a call to be more collaborative in the sense that in order to help move it forward, but also the perspectives, you know, we're, we're one we're one commission with perspectives. There's lots of stuff going on in the city that we are not totally aware of. And so it would be beneficial to have city staff and a council member lead, you know, actually really involved in the process rather than adjust the BNRC going off and doing this. I just see that dragging things out longer because we just don't know everything that's going on. Um, and we could really benefit from that relationship.
So, so as a, I mean, as a follow up to that, I, I, so thank you. And I, I would say that uh, to me, if we want to take action right now, to me, we need to create an out climate action plan, period. And in order for us to create a climate action plan, the city council needs to drive it. And for us, and this needs to be a city council action item. City council can involve BNRC, city council can involve businesses, city council can involve coastal commission, whatever be the case. But if you want to take action, it needs to be a city council measure. And I would support something where we have a uh, subcommittee or or something from, from the city council aspect where we're driving things forward. I also recognize that there is going to be a new council, not, not in the, in the not too distant future. So potentially we could consider this. I know I don't want to prolong this, but potentially we want to um, give a chance to the new um, council to also look into this item and see who from their side wants to participate in this action. So at this point in time, my, my view is that uh, this come back to the council, the BNRC has done a lot, a lot of this. I appreciate it. Uh, and I think it, it needs to come back to council and council needs to take action. Thank you.
Mayor Proton Emilio.
Thank you. Um, ju- just a couple of questions, actually. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service. Appreciate that for the city. And just a couple of things, uh, I have a couple of questions, actually. Uh, and these are real minor and appreciate all the work you've done on it. The, on some of the red lined items, those are the recommendations from BNRC. Is that right? Or on the strapped ordinance, for example, I'll just use this as an example, uh, um, paper carryout bags provided to customers shall contain a minimum of a seventy-five percent post consumer recycled paper. Oh, that's the next job. I'm sorry. Apologize for that. Um, I'm jumping ahead a little bit. Then the question I'll, I'll bring out to um, uh, I might put George first a little bit on the spot here. Uh, George, could you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah, I just curious, um, what, what do you, I just curious about your recommendation. What do you think? Should we go from this? This can't happen overnight, obviously, but uh, where, where do you think, what, what's your opinion about it?
Uh, it's a tall order, but I think it's a really noble goal. Um, so in, in a lot of ways, I support what the BNRC is going for, but I, I do think it's going to be expensive. And I think it's gonna take a lot of minds working together to get us there.
Okay, thank you. And Ben, Mr. Harvey.
Mayor Tim, Mayor Proton Emilio through the mayor, my suggestion would be if there's an appetite from the council to move forward quickly and and not delay. As was mentioned, you are going to be forming a new council. Um, what I would suggest is this becomes a council goal with the cascading tactics that support the goal. If you have that, then that will dovetail nicely with the capital improvement program because you might want to make some type of infrastructure investment uh, in the next fiscal year. You'll also want to make it part of your spending plan priorities. And so if the goal is there, yes, it can certainly also be part of the general plan, of course, as an element. Yes, it needs to be. But then you can also have the capital improvement projects and other legislative programs cascading nicely, it becomes a work plan and it moves forward. And that's how you quickly make it a priority uh, for this coming council and and staff. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Um, my suggestion would be to um, let the staff uh, work this program in uh, just what Mr. Harvey suggested. Um, yes.
I'm sorry, I just would, I would want a council goal um, with this next coming council so that we, you know, we would have that. If the council decided to make it a priority and a goal, that's, and then it could cascade down. That would be how we would want to operate, not to correct you, but that's just, that would be better. Thank you.
So my, my thought on it is um, maybe we look at it in uh, the new council be sworn in on, I think it's December seventh. I'm not sure what exact date is. It's December seventh. And then maybe once people get used to the system, maybe bring it back in January. That's my thought on it.
I, I want to echo the thanks and appreciation for your efforts bringing it forward. I'm, I'm uh, hearing unanimous support. It's something that uh, is long overdue um, for the city. And so it's uh, great that you brought, brought this forward. Um, and I just picking off some of the other um, ideas, uh, creating a working group. Um, makes a lot of sense as the, as the next step. And what I'd like council to consider, and if you're willing to accept that we've got the chair here of the BNRC, thankfully. Um, for our council to direct the BNRC to um, describe this working group, you know, but uh, give it a name. Um, who would be on this working group? And by the way, um, um, have someone from CSU MB, Professor Ed Fernandez, thank you, um, would be an excellent add to that. Some of the deliverables, we heard some ideas about the general plan. I'm not sure personally how that works on it, but I'm not that familiar with it. A timeline and uh, some rough ideas of cost and public outreach. So sort of flesh out what this working group uh, would, would do. Um, I'd check with uh, well, I just heard um, Watsonville, but I know Carmel just recently um, and Santa Cruz had uh, um, climate action plans completed. I'd be happy to uh, to help with contacts for Carmel and Santa Cruz as to, you know, how did they organize the effort? Not, not their plan, but how did they put together the, the group of people to do the, to do the work? And then bring this back to council. So um, I'm seeing some nods here on the dais. We're not going to be doing the work. You would be putting together this, this uh, plan, this working group plan. What do you think reactions?
Is this on now? Okay. What we were hoping tonight was to get the support of council because this really needs to be driven. Uh, and the BNRC has limited resources, but with your support and your input, we're happy to take it on. And I agree that we do need to have a working group that consists of more than just the BNRC subcommittee. Uh, it needs to be integrated into the city and also have eventually at least public input. Uh, so if uh, you're requesting the BNRC to take this on, we're agreeing to do that. I appreciate your support.
Council member McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. And something else to consider when you're, when you're sort of putting this together and and your list is also, you know, resources as far as staff time or money. So during um, budgeting or, you know, if, if this becomes a council goal on like a CIP list, you'll have the dollar amount. Um, cause I think that that is really important. I know it's helpful for the council to have that called out and you're going to need resources. So.
Right. And I also think that uh, looking to what other cities have already done, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel from scratch. I think that'll be really important too. It would be very helpful to have those contacts so that we can go out to similar sized cities uh, in, in this area who have already come up with climate action plans. So.
And thank you so much for being a champion and and taking this on.
Well, thank you for your support because I think it's something we really need to be doing.
Council member Tomlinson.
Yeah, I'll just add, thank you for, for being willing to take it on. I think it's unanimous support and we're very lucky to have the willing. I, I would love, I do think putting together what this group's gonna do, what the goals are. I'm happy to, to try to help if you need me.
Yeah, that'd be great. And we'll take you up on.
Okay. I know Megan and I have met before. Um, and, and then I do think setting it as a goal, I won't be here, but setting it as a goal where we can um, where his council can hopefully really put the, the resources behind building it.
Well, you can be a member of the public on the committee.
I am, I'll be a member of the public. It'd be great. You can't get rid of me.
Public at large. Yeah.
Do we need a motion?
Um, yeah, um, we've got council member Coletti and then let's come back to you for a motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, there are a lot of resources uh, available. Uh, Carmel formed a committee. You know about this and they've been very active. I've been watching their progress. I do think we do need uh, uh, an overall direction though from council and a goal is establishing a goal is fine or just agreeing that that's going to be a commitment. We've, we should be doing three things, I think. We should be establishing a climate uh, change element to our general plan. We should be amending and updating our conservation element in our general plan. And that goes also for our open space. So that's going to be something that I'm looking that's going to be something that I'm looking forward to next year is getting, you know, basically the stamp of approval from the council to dedicate the funding. And typically, you know, what you do is you go out and you find some of these committees actually, you know, they'll come back and they'll recommend an outside consultant. So if you in your, you know, research, find some consultants that can help guide the process, that's going to be very useful. Sometimes it can, you know, organically spring up from a grassroots effort from local, you know, talent, but outside consultants is also an option. And I'd like to see that as a as a possibility. So I encourage us going forward with this and thinking about getting our general plan updated because we keep hearing about it being so stale. So thank you.
I have one other comment, and that is that I think that we'll need staff time to to get this pulled together. So Mr. First may be called upon to help us with that, or Mr. Go. But but they need to be in support of this as well.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Try to make a motion. All right, I move that the BNRC come back to council with a flushed out plan for a subcommittee or task force, however, whatever you're going to name it, that will drive climate action plan activities for the future. And that council can can then review.
Yeah, I think the operative word is direct. We are directing the BNRC to do this work.
Right, we're directing. What did I say? But that sounds great.
And I'll second that, but I'll add, we need to have a timeframe for you to come back. And let you.
I think it's really important to have them. I mean, I'm just going to throw this out there before you pick the date, but that to try to do it in a soonish soon sooner than later, because when the next council meets in January, having things like knowing and as the budget process happens that you need a consultant and it's going to cost this much money and you're going to need this, you know, having all that set January, February timeframe will be important. So trying to come back in the first couple of meetings in January would be key. Is that doable?
I'm not sure. Frankly, I mean, it's hard to tell how much work this is going to be. But we'll put that as a as a goal. And we'll work towards that.
Okay.
At least come back with a proposal.
How about ninety days or sooner?
Yeah. That sounds, that sounds true.
Okay.
Okay, I'll second that. And Councilmember McAdams.
I'm just wondering, can we allocate some staff time to the BNRC to help them? Would that would that help you?
I think it would.
Okay, so could we maybe allocate no more than ten hours of staff time to help them?
Absolutely. We can add that amendment, I think, with Mr. Do you want the specific staff person?
Mr. Harvey is in charge of his staff.
He nodded.
So whatever you're you're asking, Mr. Harvey, we're not making that decision.
Yeah.
Ten hours is fine. Thank you. We'll we'll figure that out. Thank you.
Okay, you picked the who, but ten hours. Okay, so we'll add that to the motion, Ms. Kendall.
Right. So my understanding is you'll come back to council in January. Is that right? With whatever you've got.
Yes.
Okay. End of vote, please.
Councilmember Tomlinson. Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Proton McAdams. Aye, but I'm not the mayor. Councilmember McAdams. I was looking at Amelia. Yeah, Mayor Proton Emilio.
Aye.
Councilmembers Coletti.
Aye.
Pedri. And Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to item thirteen B, single use plastics. Ms. Myers, welcome. And I see we've misspelled your name again. One E, not two.
Good evening, everyone, council members, mayor, staff, and the public. Oops. Let's see. So in November of twenty nineteen, the council approved, like this setup here, excuse me. The council approved amendments to chapter eleven ninety-eight of the code regarding prohibition on single use plastics and food packaging. They were to be initiated in April of twenty twenty and then COVID hit, of course. But but prior to the passage of of that ordinance, the the city and a lot of nonprofit groups had reached out to the community, the business, to make everyone aware and get everybody kind of tuned in to what was what was going on. But the enforcement was postponed and has been postponed. And so what we're trying, what we're proposing is now that COVID is pretty much behind us is that we reengage the community, the business community and the citizenry on the on the ordinance eleven ninety-eight, that's single use plastics. But before doing that, we're proposing that we make a few slight changes to the ordinance as it's current, as it currently is written. And I don't know, let's see. And so I'll show you in the next couple of slides. I also provided, Mr. Emilio pointed out in my red line, I provided that just as an illustration to show that we're really just making a few proposed minor changes to what is currently existing. And this is to be more in line with what has changed in the last couple of years. Things have moved forward a little bit and some things have not wholeheartedly worked. So next slide, please. So section thirty of chapter eleven ninety-eight provides a ban for single use plastics, plastic bags and charges for paper carryout bags. The the minimum requirement right now for carryout paper bags is a hundred percent recyclable material. And I think in practice, that is, that's is not really been used workable. So we're proposing that be reduced to seventy-five percent to just, you know, basically reflect reality. Also, right now, it's the the ordinance provides for offering of paper bags at the cost of ten cents per bag. And we did away with the single use plastic bags. We're proposing that that charge be increased to twenty-five cents a bag. And then the other workaround that we've that we've noticed at grocery stores is that they have also are using those heavier plastic bags that are supposed to be reusable. They are in fact reusable, but most people are throwing them away and treating them as single use. So we're proposing that those reusable plastic bags, it be required that the charge is upped to similar to the other reusable bags. So that they, you know, they charge a dollar ninety-nine instead of ten cents for those bags to encourage people to really reuse them. See. And then the other thing that we're proposing is that we allow compliant paper bags to be used for wet items, pharmacy items, produce to encourage the, that's where the single use plastic bags now are currently used. So we would, we would allow paper right now, paper now, instead of just the reusable or instead of the single use plastic bags. Next slide, please. The we're proposing that the ordinance be amended in section thirty-five to prohibit bioplastic PLA and allow nonplastic recyclable pack packaging such as aluminum and glass. The waste hall in Monterey County, because we're so agriculturally, you know, rich, the waste haulers do not accept bioplastic PLA. In some, in some parts of the country, that's not been an issue. What happens with bioplastic PLA is it degrades a lot quicker than normal plastic. So it's been a benefit. But because we're we're an agricultural community, the waste haulers and and the organic farmers are not accepting that. So that's been a particular issue for us. So we're recommending that we prohibit the bioplastic PLA and then allow the nonplastic recyclable and pack and packaging such as aluminum and glass as well. With regarding straws, this is just a little bit of a correction in the definition of SUD. That includes paper straws. So we would propose that that be changed to SUP, which is also a defined term, but so it would clearly permit paper straws being allowable. Let's see. And then this is probably maybe the biggest change that we are proposing. Right now, food service providers may charge for takeout containers. We're proposing that that be changed to will charge for takeout containers. And we've put in a twenty-five cent per cup to cover the different, the difference in the costs. And then for like a whole meal order, not to exceed a dollar. We don't want it to be super prohibitive, but we want it. We want to encourage people to bring reusable containers. And then so next slide, please. In section fifty-five of eleven ninety-eight, there are currently, it currently currently contemplates some exemptions. We would request that there be two exemptions included in this section. One is Meals on Wheels for their sealing film that they use in their in their single in their, you know, in their single use meals. There's not any viable nonplastic alternative to this that meets the health and safety requirements for food and that actually would seal to the extent needed. The other is dry cleaning. There's not currently a very good alternative to to that. And the and the dry cleaning industry has been particularly harmed with people working from home. And so we're proposing that at least until there is a viable nonplastic alternative available. And then finally, our ordinance currently doesn't contemplate any prohibition or regulation of balloons and confetti. And we are proposing that that be included in the ordinance. And also that the Pacific Grove use and event permits be modified to clearly prohibit the use of balloons and confetti and to possibly oh, I'm sorry, next slide, please. There we go. So that it would be made highly visible for the on the permit application and website. And so people would be made aware. And that's that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have public comment? Ms. Myers, how about if you just sit down? I'm sure there'll be more questions in front and get some public comment.
Comment, and it's a question, and I know you can't just ask that, but I'm sure this has been addressed before and I have forgotten who is responsible for, I know who's responsible for collecting these fees, but who, where do those fees finally end up? To the ones that are producing all this, the stores and the restaurants and so on? Or is it almost like a tax that comes to the city? So if that could be explained, please.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi again, Jenny from the chamber. We're always happy to participate in this, obviously, because there are businesses that are impacted by this. I had asked a couple of restaurateurs about sort of their their thoughts on these. There were two two questions or two of them that they had a little bit more of a hard time understanding. The first one is changing it from a hundred percent to seventy-five percent. It seems like we've we've already gone to the extreme here at a hundred percent recyclable material. And that feels like we're stepping back from something that felt like it was a good move. So just a question of why? Why step back to seventy-five percent when a hundred percent was really the goal? And then the other one was about the takeout fee for takeout containers. The cost for the restaurateurs is cleaning the plates and the glassware and the fancy napkins, which aren't being used for takeout containers. So the real cost for them is is in that maintaining the all of the dishware and not for the to-go boxes. So it kind of seems counterproductive to charge for those containers because there's not a whole lot of cost incurred. So that one feels a little bit more unrealistic. The others seem like they're good moves. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Hold on, we'll see our virtual audience, maybe.
Thank you. We do have two hands raised at the moment, now three. Mark Chackman.
Welcome.
Okay, I turned my virtual muting off. Thank you very much. I think this is in generally a great idea and I think however, it goes a little bit too far. You were sensibly adjusting the recycled paper content based on the reality of the ability to make the seventy-five percent versus a hundred percent. But then you don't take the other realities into account when you have these these penalties, these incentives or disincentives, raising the bag fee from ten cents to twenty-five cents, taking the cup fee from ten cents to one ninety-nine or whatever that was. And finally, outlawing balloons and confetti. The cost raises, in reality, this is a time of, the reality of today is it's high inflation right now. And we're edging into, if we're not there now, a recession. And I can't think of a more counterproductive, counter-supporting approach toward our people, our residents to say, we're just going to bump up all those fines and penalties and incentives now, ignoring the reality that you may or may not be getting able to cover the fees of all your jobs as it is. We're just going to raise all these prices for you, ten cents and twenty-five cents. We're just going to, who, not only is it hurting people with in terms of the current inflationary atmosphere and high interest rates, but it's regressive. The people who are, the people are going to be hurt much most are not the people who think, oh, it's not a big deal, an extra dollar, an extra effect. There are a lot of people who, when you're bumping up your fees for bags from ten cents to twenty-five cents, that's a significant amount of money for a lot of people. Regressive, regressive income tax, regressive taxes, regressive fees are absolutely antithetical to what you want to do and treat the people of this town. So just don't raise these these fees. I don't see a correlation here. This this links up to the twenty thirty-two goals for California. This is kind of a semi-autonomous kind of road you're building. All these are national objectives. All these are California objectives. But I think that the vigor and the lack of rigor in assessing the impacts is problematic here. What is super prohibitive for one demographic is impossible for another one. I mean, balloons and confetti is kind of like the the last straw. I don't know where the state is on balloons and confetti, but I think a better cleanup law and a better recycling or disposal law is better than saying, we're getting rid of balloons in America. Let's just get rid of smiles, too. It's just, it's a little bit excessive. It's good hearted. A lot of this stuff we need to do and it's a lot of work into it. But let's not, let's not just go down this road with tunnel vision and keep in mind the regressive nature of a lot of the things you recommend. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Inga Lawrence and Dimer.
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, my question was going to be what Sally asked, and that is who actually? What happens with those fees that are paid? I mean, I certainly don't know because I have all kinds of reuse bags and I reuse them. I don't walk into a store without. I don't walk into a store without having a bag with me. And the other thing is, it seems like a lot of places already charge 25 cents a bag if you want one. It's like, I mean, I couldn't imagine paying for a bag at this point, but I think a lot of this is trying to retrain people to think of a more sustainable world. And as far as banning confetti, hallelujah. I mean, the cleanup of confetti is horrendous. So anyway, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Chiani.
Welcome.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. I'm sorry, are we coming here? BNRC, Susan bringing this to you. Because we're really comfortable with plastics. They make a lot of things really convenient. And so I think this, this is all about how to work our way out of that mindset. And, and, and bringing it to you allows this kind of public comment and your comments. And, but I think, you know, those are all things to work out. I think we were actually quite comfortable with it when this, I thought was, yes, it was approved back in 20, end of 19 or beginning of 2020. And, oh yeah, because it was going to start on Earth Day in 2020. That's right. So, so anyway, I, I'm totally in support of BNRC's efforts on this. And, and I look forward to hearing your discussion of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleen Ingram.
Welcome.
Thank you. I want to just thank you for bringing this to the council. Thank you, Council for listening. I do have some comments to make about the charge of 25 cents for bags, which are now either 10 cents or be given free. It is a disincentive to try to keep people from seeing these bags as just a single-use disposable. The four millimeter plastic bags that are given away at 10 cents at checkout are used single-use, most of them. A lot of people use them again, but I pick up plastics from Meals on Wheels and from DiMaggio's cleaners for the community. And there are tons of those bags in there, just used once. So it's, it's to motivate people to think about the environment. It's not to penalize them. It, there are alternatives to these things, and that's what it's all about. If we need to have more exemptions for people that have hardships, that can be discussed. But we have to move forward in trying to take care of our environments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kim.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank the BNRC for bringing this forward. They've been doing a lot of work and I appreciate all the work they're doing. I'm only going to speak on the balloons and the confetti. I, I don't really have anything to say about the different charges, whatever you guys decide on that. But today's Herald had a story from a study that was done at Hopkins on the whales that are suffering from microplastics. There really is no reason why a coastal town like ours should have balloons or confetti at all, anywhere. We should be held to a higher standard. I've worked with wildlife for many years and done wildlife rehab, and I've seen multiple animals die from balloons, balloon ingestions. I mean, we've all seen it, the birds that are dying from that. So there's no reason to have balloons here, and those really should be outlawed on our coast. It is, you can't have balloons in the parks there when people are having weddings and stuff. So it should just be the whole city. And whatever you decide on the rest of it, fine, but I agree that the balloons and confetti need to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marcia.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. Though the ideas sound nice in theory, I do have some concerns about their application. We'd be implementing these recommendations as the only city. In fact, one of the smaller cities in Monterey County. So we would be flying on our own lonesome, in other words. And as others have mentioned, where will the penalty taxes go? Will we need to hire auditors as well as enforcers? And the, the word enforcement is mentioned in the proposal, which is also disconcerting to me. Is this proposed measure, is it going to mean that PG will hire new city staff enforcers to, to inspect garbage dumpsters of small businesses and those of residential dumpsters looking for straws and plastic bags? Or, or will we just have the police enforce it as a misdemeanor? I mean, I don't know where, where all of this enforcement and punitive taxes, where, where it's going, where it will end. And what about the contraband, quote unquote, coming into PG from other jurisdictions like Monterey's, Mickey D's? What if, what if PG, PD or plastics enforcers see a soccer mom bringing her children and friends home from dinner in Monterey? Will the mother be cited if they're found drinking soda or milkshakes with straws? I mean, at this point, PG can't even keep the trails' garbage receptacles from overflowing on long weekends and, or during the tourist season. I'd suggest that maybe that would be the first level of, of the plastics challenge that we should address before we go out on a limb with all these punitive taxes and enforcers and things like that. Also, there's a statement that enforcement was stalled because of COVID, but now that COVID is over. We're, we're in a recession. Small businesses are barely recovering from the COVID lockdowns. Now we're going to hit them with all these punitive taxes to collect and various bags with percentages that recycle in them, and it's just really kind of unnecessary and draconian. I hope we would, you would reconsider going forward with this and wait until the new council's in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Chiani.
Welcome.
Counsel and Mayor, please don't kick this can down the road. I'm a balloon launcher. I launch balloons as story balloons regarding the ATC project. I'm willing to stop that practice. Of course, it would be nice if we use story poles. On the other hand, plastic is a huge problem. I can recall walking along the beach and seeing little styrofoam balls blowing along the beach like beautiful little sandballs. And we've gotten rid of styrofoam, at least I hope we got rid of styrofoam. But it was a huge problem. And I think the notion of having a continuation of plastics, think of The Graduate, I mean, the movie Graduate, and the comment about the future is plastics. Well, here we are. That was, I think, like 1967 or 68. And here we are, continuing to promote plastics in our lives. And you have the opportunity, and I hope you take it, the opportunity to stop that practice. I'm willing to give up story balloons. The notion of party balloons and straws and all those confetti and things like that, I think Inga mentioned it, is something that we need to enforce. And if we need enforcement dollars to do it, then we need to do it. I'll become a citizen, plastic enforcer, if you, if it's needed. We should all be citizen, plastic enforcers to stop the use of plastics that will migrate into the shoreline, migrate into our parks, our forests, that will damage our environment. Please, please adopt a reasonable practice. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
No further hands raised.
Council discussion, Mayor Protem Emilio.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So thank you for your service. Appreciate, appreciate that. I'm okay with some of the other things. I think just, just being realistic in regards to the balloons. I used to be in, and I'm sure it's the same way nowadays in education for a long time. And we had high school graduations and sixth grade graduations and everybody brings their balloons, you know? Whatever the year is, they got on the balloon. So I, I think in realist, realistically, I think that's going to be a little tough to enforce. That's just my opinion. I think parents want to treat their children to something. Yeah, I've even seen it when I was in elementary principal kindergarten, come up with balloons all the time, you know? This was in another city. So that was my, my comment. And the pricing, I know I mentioned it before, but the, do you know if the, the businesses were contacted about the different price changes or anything? I'm just curious.
I am not aware that they were.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think that there's been, this is on, right? I don't think that there's been any outreach, and we wanted to have this discussion and give these recommendations to you before, and before the reinitiation to the business community.
I see.
But I know that the 25 cent per coffee cup thing has been used elsewhere. I think it's in the city, like Santa Cruz. It's, it's, we didn't, we didn't just make this up. So I think it's the wave of the future and it really, you know, it's a carrot and a stick thing. But I think plastic has become such a big problem. And whatever we can do to, you know, just try to get people to change their ways. Because with ultimate goal is to be using reusable, you know, bring your reusable coffee cups to the coffee place or your reusable bags to the grocery store. That's, that's really what we want. And this kind of goes hand in hand with climate change. And so it just, to me, it seemed like the time was right.
I'm not against it. I want you to know that. I'm just trying to be realistic about it.
And I, I understand.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not against it. I'm all for it, but it's just in regards to balloon things, that might be, I know it's a minor thing, but it might be hard to enforce during graduation at PG High School and middle schools and so forth. I'm just being realistic about that, but I, I support the program.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you so much for, for this work. These suggestions are bold. And so when we talk about committing to climate action, you know, ordinances and programs like these are steps towards, you know, really engaging our community and visitors to sort of, you know, take in their own accountability of, of single-use plastic use. On the to-go charge for the to-go items, do all, so I, I heard that and also read that we haven't done really any outreach, but I'm just wondering if the restaurants are going to allow their customers to do that. I know that in some places, they're not wanting that. At coffee shops for a while, I couldn't bring my reusable cup. They're, you know, wanting to only put paper. So I just would be a little, you know, concerned. I would want to make sure that the outreach is really clear and that restaurants would, you know, embrace that and, and, you know, want to participate versus them feeling like this is something that is being, you know, forced upon them. So I would want that to just be like a gracious sort of transition.
I completely understand. And I, I think that, that not allowing, restaurants not allowing people to bring their cups in was largely a result of COVID. So I think, you know, I just think the re-education and, 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 you know, going out and talking to the businesses is, is the time is right, right now. And I believe also that the concept of the bringing reusables and what people can do is in a, is in a state law that is coming into effect. Which is, we didn't attempt to incorporate everything that's required under the state law into this amendment. We just wanted to amend just very lightly. So anyway, I think, I think the time is coming and I think that when we go to the businesses to do the outreach, we really need to understand what the new state law requirements are going to be. And then the ordinance on top of that. And I don't think there's very many, this, the 25 cent thing, I don't believe is in state law right now. But so that would be taking a little bit older step than what the state requires. Although I know that other, like San Francisco, Santa Cruz, other areas are doing that too. And it's, it's kind of seems to be the way of the future.
Thank you. And, and so it's my understanding that currently the program that we have, the, the bag charges are kept by the store or the operator. And so as far as the bag fee and like the to-go fees go, I would really like to see, so Whole Foods, as an example, they offer the customer, you know, instead of getting the, the 25 cents, you can donate it to a nonprofit. So I would love to see encouraging participation citywide in a program like that. And, and perhaps those fees, even if it's half of them, could go to groups that would, you know, maybe obviously would be a nonprofit, but maybe a nonprofit that would help with maintaining the recreation trail, investing in the butterfly sanctuary, right? Adding more refillable water. So I think that there could be like a really nice collaboration and buy-in where, yes, we're upping the fees and, you know, you're still going to keep your 25 cents. And then the rest can go to, you know, this nonprofit. So I, I think that there can be something really neat there.
I think that's a wonderful idea because I, I really do, I've, I hear the comments about, you know, just the punitive kind of nature of some of this stuff. And it would be really nice to turn that into something where they feel like they're giving.
Absolutely. And especially, you know, what we heard from a caller, and I've heard, you know, for, for years on the council, like the, the amount of trash that you see after Memorial Day holiday. Well, maybe some of those funds, you know, are tucked away and after busy holidays, you know, we have the manpower in addition to like the amazing volunteers who go clean, clean the trash. But I mean, I think that there can be like a really nice connection there.
Dovetail.
Yes. So thank you.
And just to kind of point out, I mean, the, the trash, this is, this is coming from the BNRC Plastic and Litter Reduction Subcommittee. So it's like this dovetails. We, if you can, if you can really get people to modify their behavior just a little bit by bringing reusable bags and bringing reusable containers, then you're going to reduce the trash. So.
Councilmember Pedori.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Susan, for bringing this. Really appreciate it. First, first of all, I would like to commend BNRC as well as Sustainable PG, whoever I've talked to, especially with respect to single-use plastic. They always quote Pacific Grove as being ahead of the curve with doing items the right way. So I think this is also indicative of what we're doing in the future with respect to bringing everything to a closure with, with how we handle plastic. So thank you. The other thing I would also point out is as far as I know, Regen, Regen, which is the, the waste collector, is also having trouble like recycling plastic. It's not necessary that if you throw plastic, et cetera, into your container, that it's actually meeting its correct end. So plastic is a problem no matter where. So my, my view is that I think it kind of like rolled into what Councilwoman McAdams was saying is, and I think it's a mixture. My view is that if we bring all of this at one shot, I mean, people are going to have a shock. So taking incremental steps would be like my recommendation, making it kind of like more. Making it uh, kind of like more uh, just like how the example that was provided. Instead of being punitive, kind of like uh, treating it accordingly, uh, will actually help us uh, in putting forth together something like this. And I would address the the balloon challenge, so to speak, the last and because that seems like a, could be a contentious issue out of all of them. The other thing I would point out is, uh, it may not be a bad idea to work with the Chamber of Commerce to um, Tennessee, so take a sample approach of towards some restaurants, et cetera, to see what they're, what they think about this. Before kind of expanding it to overall to all businesses. So I think we should work with the Chamber of Commerce closely with that. And finally, I had a question, which I think some folks have asked too, is like, where does this money go? I mean, does twenty-five cents or ten cents, does it come back to the city? Is 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 it just a, but?
That's for, uh.
So yeah, it it doesn't, it.
It does not, through the mayor, does not come back to the city. It it, as was explained, it it's it's an incentive at the retail. We don't have a tax that we pass for that.
So I mean, so the, so the other rub, right? Like, I mean, so I'm just viewing this from a business angle is that, uh, uh, the more punitive items that we enforce, right? Um, it is quite likely that the business will increase their product cost. Because it's a cost for them. If somebody's saying, I'm not gonna buy from you because it's gonna cost me extra, they they might charge in different ways. So at at the end of the day, it's the consumer that gets affected. So I think I'm, we just need to, I would, I would say come up with ideas to better the proposition in some way. So that we have a community that's actually uh, uh, involved. Go ahead, Ben.
Thank you, Councilmember Pedore. I just wanna say, we we've seen this movie before because we had this previously and we we rolled this out and as was described, it just got halted. So we have the playbook and we would work closely, obviously, with the chamber. There's other partners out there. Last go around, the Monterey Bay Aquarium was very helpful. You know, you'd wanna include the bid and the hid. You you could, we have a PIO uh, that could help with this. So there's, you know, you just want to have when when, if and when the council decides to adopt a revised ordinance, you have a lead time before it takes effect and then you can work from from there. And so we 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 can, we can do this if the council decides that they want to move forward. We have this playbook and I and I feel confident that it's something we can do. The carve-out in particular for the dry cleaners, that was challenging last time. Um, there are ways around that. I mean, the the aquarium was very helpful with reusable dry cleaning bags and we can look at that as a phase two or something. If if we wanna go that route, but we we can do this if council decides to move forward.
And and actually, that is, sorry, uh, that that was actually helpful because I I didn't I didn't look at the twenty nineteen exercise to see what kind of items uh, we we had gone through, so appreciate what the previous council had done there. If if you have a script, so to follow, I'm completely supportive of this because all of these items are just uh, come in conjunction with the climate action plan altogether. Go ahead.
So if I could just, I I think the the key is, you know, definitely having the timeline. That that was important last time, just to have, you know, this is when we want it to go into effect and then just working from there. That's the important part.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I have a lot of comments and and I recall in twenty nineteen, my li- my my list led this and there were, there was meetings at the museum and tons and and believe it or not, it wasn't that controversial. Like, you know, the city was really, really aligned on doing this and um, I I do remember just sort of rolling in in my head, like, oh, my gosh, we had this great plan and then COVID hit and the world changed and we were taking out all this plastic and and everybody just kind of stopped the best practices of of not using single-use plastics. So I'm ecstatic to see the idea that we'll bring it back. It does have to be done thoughtfully, probably slower than most of us would want. I remember there was like a twelve-month rollout period where anyone could write to the city manager for a hardship and be granted a twelve-month period where they could have that grace to be able to get, you know, the straws or to get whatever the thing is that was troubling them. Um, so I'm, overall, that's all to say that I I really appreciate this. Um, my questions are, I kind of like break it down of the responsibilities on all of us and we're putting a little bit on the businesses and we're putting a little bit on the patrons. And as patrons, you know, going to the store and having to bring my own bag, that's my, you know, my responsibility. I'm deterred by not having to pay that fee, either twenty-five cents or a dollar ninety-nine to buy myself a new reusable bag. Um, and the businesses seem to be very much in compliant with that al- already. Um, so I I don't have a problem with going from ten cents to twenty-five cents, um, in that one. The takeout containers I'm have, I'm pausing on because if I go to a restaurant and I don't eat all my food and I wanna take some home, you know, not put that in the landfill, like, uh, you know, I want a compostable container given to me so that I can take it home. I don't wanna styrofoam and I know we don't have that anymore, but I don't want plastic either. And so I thought we had this component of the restaurant needed to have a compostable container. I remember the Grove Market coming and saying, well, those last for like an hour and then your lasagna falls through, right? And so those have improved though, a lot. Um, and so where is that piece to this takeout part? Because that dollar fee um, seems to be a deter- like, it's just on the consumer, right, at that point? And then you can get all these to-go containers. And yes, you have to pay a dollar for it, but why, I'd like to make the business have to give a compostable to-go container. We were doing that before, so I'll let you speak.
Right, well, so I, I mean, our, what our intent was with this was just make as few changes to the current ordinance as possible. Um, so, so this, the implementation of the fee would just be kind of in addition to what is already in the in the ordinance. And that's why I provided that red line to kind of show that that we aren't really proposing any big giant changes. Um, so I did, so I think whatever was in the ordinance before regarding that would remain in effect. This would be on top of that.
Okay, so the 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 businesses are still, the onus is on them to use compostable to-go item containers. If you wanna try to avoid this fee, you need to either bring your coffee cup or bring a lasagna pan. I I don't think that makes sense. So there's not a lot that a co- a consumer can do to avoid this fee. So I'm not supportive of the food service, like the dollar, the twenty-five cent fee, because it's just, we're not there yet as a society. I think where we're walking in with our containers. Not yet, but I think that, is that forward leaning? Yeah, it's really forward leaning, but I I would, I would remove that one.
I think, uh, yeah, I think our proposal here would be, these are the things that that the the plastics and litter reduction subcommittee would recommend. Any or all, I mean, this is all for you guys to decide. Um, the big thing that I would would like, uh, to know is when, like, depending upon what you decide, either the ordinance is just stays as is or a couple amendments are made to it. But then when can we start going back out to the businesses and and really reengage everyone and get this thing enforced? That's, that's the biggest thing.
I think we'll we'll get to that discussion. It is great. Um, I, my last comment, I believe it's the last one, um, I I support the straw uh, part, the reduc- the prohibition of PLA and, um, I don't think I'm there yet to get rid of balloons. You can have the confetti. I I get rid of the confetti, but I think balloons are still something you can coin up. So. Those are my comments, but yes, I'd love.
Make some, uh, comment about the balloons?
Yeah.
So we're not talking about balloons in your house. We're talking about balloons in the public parks, like at Lover's Point or Caledonia Park. Uh, and the same thing with the confetti. Because the cleanup is really terrible. And I'm sure that uh, Mr. Harvey and the Public Works Department can speak to that because the trash that's left after an event is horrendous. And uh, balloons especially and the confetti, even if it's rose petals or rice or whatever, people aren't supposed to be doing that, by the way, but if it's plastic, there's no way you can clean it up. And the same thing with the balloons, if they pop. If you go down to Lover's Point or Caledonia after somebody's had a birthday party or a wedding, it's really awful and it goes right into the bay. So that's what, that's primarily what we're talking about in terms of of the balloons.
I think amending it to say in on city. I'm sorry, I think amending it to say that it's city property, it would be more clear. So you could know if you could bring a balloon responsibly to your great kids' graduation or have a balloon in your backyard.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, that's, that's a good point. But that wasn't the point of the.
Yeah.
If if I could, Councilman Thomas, the mayor, the other concern with balloons, speaking from a public utility perspective, they they cause power failures and fires. And so really, you don't want balloons outdoors because the problem is everyone's well-intended, right? But then the wind picks up and the balloon flies away and it gets into the power line. That's the problem. Everybody thinks that they're a good balloon steward, but they're not. And I've worked for Southern California Edison for seven years. I can't tell you the number of power failures or buyers that we had and the cause was always a balloon. Almost always.
Interesting.
In 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 the major urban areas. So it makes sense for the wildlife. It also makes sense for your infrastructure for power.
Interesting. All right, I'm coming around on the balloons, but in in public area. Um, that's, I've hogged a lot of time. Thank you.
I I also will thank you very much for bringing this forward and uh, I'd like to know, um, and your comments about we sort of back at the community backslid as a result of COVID. So um, my biggest question is, where are we now? Cause I'm not really clear. And um, I shop at different grocery stores in town and I never know what kind of bags they're gonna have. Um, so, um, and then, of course, all the restaurants. So if uh, you're volunteering to do an effort with Sustainable PG and do an outreach, do a, do a census and find out our uh, our president of the Chamber of Commerce might help out as well.
We'd be thrilled to work with the chamber.
Yeah, yeah. And then then you could also get some feedback. I, um, I'm glad you uh, explained further about the balloons for outdoor and that makes perfect sense. And um, um, I, the only thing I'm against is uh, instituting new fees or upping the fees. The fees are regressive. I think that the ten cents per bag is meant really as a reminder to people that there is, you know, this isn't something that we want people to do. And uh, I, ten cents, it just, it's regressive. So I'd rather not see that in the future. I don't know. Um, are you, you got a lot of feedback here. It's also on video. So, um, is that enough? Um, input from us? I don't, I don't see we're gonna change the ordinance tonight. We're not directing our city attorney to change change the uh, uh, ordinance. Are you, um, somewhat clear on our thoughts as a group of people?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, Mayor Protem Emilio.
Thank you. I was, um, you know, listening to everybody's thoughts and stuff, the uh, to-go containers, uh, you know, when eat your breakfast or whatever it is, you don't finish it. So it's to-go containers. I I don't believe in, as I've listened to and what my wife and I have done. Uh, the to-go containers does, does help. There's for, I don't think we should be charged. Uh, the consumer should not be charged that. Uh, but the recommendation is to be sure to eat all your food.
Well, one thing that you might not know is that supposedly compostable to-go containers are not compostable. So. It goes in the trash. The haulers, it can't, it can't go into the compost. It's, so for example, your wet garbage now goes into your green bin and you can't be putting any supposedly compostable items in there, because it's not, none of it's compostable.
Yeah, no containers. Well, I'm sure we'll be hearing more about SB thirteen eighty-three.
Yeah.
And uh, enforcement here, sure.
You'll let me, um, it's the last item on my last meeting. Um, I I just think that it's, uh, that while we didn't iron out exactly all of your changes tonight, um, you know, there will be more, like, as you start this outreach, but I'm very supportive of it, of the clock getting restarted and the outreach and working with our new Chamber of Commerce CEO and and getting it going. And um, and then inevitably, we're gonna have to make edits and red lines to the ordinance and you'll have a, there'll be more. Um, and maybe some less that we we get rid of, but.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
You so much. Appreciate it. Um, we're now, um, going back into closed session. That's number uh, item, um, number fifteen. And we'll do a report out at the next, if there is a report out at the next regular meeting. Thank you very much for everybody for participating, staff, public, colleagues. Have a good evening.